Meeting come to order, please. Roll call, press your present button, please. Record it. There you go. Thank you. Staff announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of, several announcements. First of all, we do have a revised report for Item 12 that is in front of you on the dais. It dealt with a typo, nothing more. Second thing, we have, I also put in front of you, a copy of Census 101, All You Need to Know. Mayor Anderson asked me to help this year with the outreach of the 2020 census. And so, part of the idea is getting the word out among everybody, including planning commissioners and like that. So, this sort of outlines what the data is used for and what the outcome from that data. And we shall read it. And I also know of opportunities where you can get a job paying, beginning at $17 an hour, to be either a census taker or help verify addresses. So if any of y'all need a second or third, or perhaps fourth career, I can be of some influence, or at least I can pass your name along. And finally, we do have a request for a non-agenda item. That item would be final plat for the cliffs at Garrison Creek. The long and short story on this is, it simply did not get recorded before our approval expired. And staff has no problem at all with recommending that this item be considered at the end of the agenda.
Okay, let's take that now. Without exception, we'll put the non-agenda item on as the final item. Anyone? It'll be the final item. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Consideration of Minutes of June 13th. Most made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Record it. Consideration of Consent Agenda. Items 3 through 11. Staff?
Who's doing consent?
I do. I do, but I'm just gonna ask, anybody want to pull it?
Say again?
Just seem to see if anybody wants to pull an item.
Oh, my fault. Anyone wants to say? I've been saying this so long that I forgot it. Nobody's ever pulled an item for separate discussion, but I'm gonna ask you one for the 437th time. Anyone wants to pull an item for separate discussion, please say so now. Anyone? We'll take it as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with Item 3, Arrington Retreat, Section 5, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $125,300. Recommendation, extend current amount for a period of six months. Item 4, Kings Chapel, Section 5, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $81,000. Recommendation, release the bond. Item 5, Kings Chapel, Section 6, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $135,000. Recommendation, release the bond. Item 6, Kings Chapel, Section 7, Maintenance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $75,000. Recommendation, release the bond. Item 7, Lookaway Farms Wastewater Area, Performance Bond for Wastewater Treatment Disposal System, Recommendation, convert to maintenance and extend current amount for a period of two years. Item 8, Stone Valley Subdivision, Performance Bond for Water, $79,000. Recommendation, extend current amount for a period of one year. Item 9, Grove, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $1,600,000. Recommendation, reduce from out of $800,000 and extend for a period of one year. Item 10, Water Leaf, Section 2, Performance Bond for Roads Drainage and Erosion Control, $25,000. Recommendation, extend current amount for a period of one year. Item 11, Water Leaf, Section 2, Performance Bond for Water, $7,000. Recommendation, release the bond.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion? Question? Most made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Under openness, Jen, Item 12, Preliminary Plat Review for McDaniel Estates, Phase 3, containing 42 lots on 16.46 acres located off McDaniel Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A concept plan for this development was approved at the February 2017 meeting. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for the third phase of the development, which consists of 42 lots. The applicant has requested action on this item be deferred until the August 2019 meeting to allow additional time to acquire the rights of way and/or easements necessary to construct the required off-site roadway improvements. Staff concurs with this request. However, as this is the fourth request for deferral, it should be noted that if said rights of way and/or easements are not in place by the August 2019 meeting, staff will recommend denial of the preliminary plat of this phase of the development.
Motion to defer. Most made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Eddie and Holly? Record it. Motion carries. Item 13, Continuing Under Openness, Final Plat Review for Locust Creek Holla Large Lot Easement Subdivision Containing Four Lots on 84.46 Acres Located Off of Fisher Road in the 1st Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is approximately 85 acres in size and is located at the end of Fisher Road, approximately two fifths of a mile west of Bradford Road. The applicant is requesting approval of a large lot easement subdivision in order to create four lots off a new 50-foot ingress/egress utilities easement. The site contains a number of natural resources, including steep slopes, two ridge tops, and woodlands. Nearly all of the site is covered in tree canopy. All zoning ordinance requirements, including those regarding the protection of natural resources, have been met. The applicant is proposing individual septic systems for the lots, and the Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved their request. Water will be provided by onsite wells. As no fire hydrants are proposed and as none are currently located within 500 feet of the building envelopes, the building envelopes have been separated by 200 feet. The plat is in order, and staff recommends approval subject to the following. A notice of coverage issued by TDAC will be required prior to the signing of the plat. Number 2, a land disturbance permit must be obtained for the overall development. And number 3, driveway and drainage infrastructure must be complete, consistent with zoning ordinance requirements, prior to issuance of building permits.
Questions of staff? There, second? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Said 12 up there, we're on 13. Okay. Thank you, Sammy. Beth? Hit it with your hammer. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Jen, Item Under Non-Residential Site Plans, Non-Residential Site Plan Review for Page Middle School on 24.6 acres located off of Arnold Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval of an addition to Page Middle School, which includes approximately 64,300 square feet of classroom space. A portion of the existing school will be demolished to accommodate this addition, and the student enrollment will remain the same. The future widening of Arnold Road has been taken into account as it relates to the associated access and drainage for the project, and the county highway department has been coordinating with the applicant on these plans. Property in question is approximately 25 acres in size and is located on Arnold Road. Adjoining parcels range in size from 5 acres to 30 acres and are used for agricultural or residential purposes. Water service is provided by Millcroft and Utility District, and wastewater is handled by a private sand filter system. Staff has received confirmation from the Williamson County School System that the wastewater system can accommodate the proposed use. All zoning ordinance requirements have been met, including the specific requirements associated with educational facilities. The submitted landscaping plan has been reviewed and approved by staff. Site plan is in order, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the site plan.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Beth?
Can I ask a couple questions on the plan, if I may? And I may need to ask Williamson County Schools, if that's okay, too? I'm seeing the, on C2.2, it's terrific. I see there that there is the sidewalk, the integral curb walk, that after you enter the school, that connects to the sports facilities. Is there a way you could explain to us, just so I can tell constituents who have asked me, as the elected member of the board, how would the sidewalk connect to the improvements on Arnold Road, where students from Brentwood Middle would be able to cross over safely to Brentwood, excuse me, to Page High School? That's probably a Highway Commission, a, there's other departments, like has mentioned, for the Arnold Road improvements. Is there any way to answer that this evening?
I'm sorry, my name is Randy Harper. I'm with the Mills Bay Wood, the civil engineer for the project. As of right now, with the roadway widening project, there is not a planned school crossing there. That would be something that we could, that could potentially be put in by the county when they do the widening project, but right now, there is currently not a planned walkway between the two schools. There's only, you know, just a small section there that's not in, or that doesn't go into the softball field at the high school, where the two actually overlap. But that would be something that the county highway department would need to approve and install. It's very unusual in a higher-speed roadway like that to do some sort of pedestrian crossing.
Can I ask you, as a follow-up? I see on the plan that we have this integral curb walk that just starts, and maybe I'm reading this incorrectly, but you have the driveway entrance. You have the sidewalk that starts there. Well, how, are we dropping people off as they drive into the school to the sidewalk? Or how are they getting, why does the sidewalk start there after, you know, you access it and there's no connectivity to any other location? I don't understand the design. I'm sorry.
That's okay. The sidewalks in that loop in front of this new addition are for drop-off and pickup.
Okay.
Where all the cars will queue down those lanes.
Okay.
So it'll be drop-off and pickup. They get out of multiple lanes, cross over, get the sidewalk, go in the building, get them, basically get them off the
Terrific.
The road there. The reason they don't go down any further, there's no planned sidewalks on Arnold Road as part of the new construction, so we don't want to basically deaden
Right.
Into the highway.
Right. It does look like that there may be space in the future, who knows, to discuss that, but at this point, you've answered my question. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Page High School, because my kids went to both. That's been something that's been a question for years, for years and years and years, because Page Middle kids go to Page High School frequently. They take classes over there. The band goes back and forth. You know, that would be a great question for, I guess, the school board, county commission on somehow getting them across safely, or maybe you can answer it. But it's, for years, that's been a safety question, because they do cross that road a lot during the day and after school.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Lackey and all of the members of this body. I'm Kevin Fortney. I'm Facilities Director for the school district. Pardon my voice, I'm a little bit congested up, but in any case, we've talked about, on many occasions, the ability to move children from one site to the other. Arnold Road is quite busy, as most people know. The, one discussion was to put a pedestrian overpass, okay? Which I think is a very challenging effort to get approved and/or move forward with it from a financial standpoint. The number of children that we have going over there, I can't give you the exact numbers, but one of the thoughts that I've had, and I've communicated with our superintendent, is that I think the idea of a overpass on Arnold is gonna be, number one, a challenge, and financially, very costly. The distance also has to be taken into consideration to where Page Middle School and location to Page High School is quite a walking distance. So, I don't think that's a very viable situation. The other discussion was to tunnel under Arnold Road. Well, that's something that people have talked about. Again, it's very expensive, there's a lot of utilities underground, and we also have to evaluate the safety of it. The direction that I want to go with our design team is, when the construction is complete on Arnold Road, traffic control devices for pedestrians are generally the responsibility of the school district. To safely get a crossing between the two schools, we've got to have connectivity by both sidewalk. And I would be very hesitant to do anything less than a control, traffic control signal to where, when an individual is wanting to cross, that they have to press that button and have traffic brought to a complete halt. I don't know if any of y'all have been out on Arnold Road during the construction that's going now on the roadway itself, but our drivers in this community, they don't care about, in my opinion, they don't care about a speed limit within a construction zone. I was out there again today, and you take your life in your hands when these people that work our construction projects on our roadways. I mean, our driving community has got to give them a break. So even with the traffic control device, you can hopefully get the traffic stopped and enough time for the children to get across. But we would have to put some procedures in place on how we let children go across. It would not be unsupervised. I can assure most, I can assure everybody of that. It just would not be unsupervised. And I don't think we have unsupervised crossings at this time, either. Now, is that to say that a child can't be over at the high school and decides to go over to the middle school to watch a softball game? It happens, and we had one accident out there. Fortunately, it wasn't severely, didn't severely injure somebody. But, but it's a, it's a subject that's on our agenda, and it's something that we're gonna continue to discuss. We've got about a 14 to 16-month construction period on the second phase of this building. And so, in that time, I'm hopeful that we can come up with a resolution. Hope that helps.
Arnold, almost across from the high school, so we've been out there for 13 years. So I know what you're talking about. People don't respect the speed or kids or school zones, et cetera. But that's just been a, an ongoing thing between Page Middle. There's quite a few kids that go over, especially after-school band kids. They move instruments back and forth, and can I say there's always been supervised? I don't know. I mean, I can't say that for sure. I can't say that it hasn't been for sure, absolutely. But definitely with the growth out there and the approval, you know, of the new Page Middle School and things going on there and high school, I think it's very important, even if it's just for one child, that there needs to be something done between the two schools. You know, my kids went to Page Middle and Page High, and kids walk the streets over there, going into the, you know, my kids have walked home, you know? We live on the Page Middle side, so I think it's really important to, while we're doing, spend all the money out there, to incorporate whatever it is to make it safe to go between the schools. And, you know, I just think it's really important that that sticks in the consideration when, you know, when y'all start talking about that again.
Yeah, I appreciate those concerns. I share in the same. And I'll take it up with the superintendent and the board, and they will direct us on a way to go.
A load crossing. Big old arms.
Big arms coming down?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, I know, you're serious. So am I. You know? And maybe we can get somebody to stop.
Hit the button.
But, but the fact is, is unfortunately, people just race through there.
Oh, yeah.
And the school flashers can be going. It doesn't slow them down, folks. You know, I will say that the sheriff's department has helped us out on Gosie Hill while we're in, under construction by putting out some speed limit signs with the radar that tells you what the speed limit is and how fast you're going. And some other signage to let people know that trucks are crossing. Now, that being a rural school, there's not gonna be a whole lot of children that are gonna be walking to school.
Does this go on all day long, where they go back and forth? Or is it, they go over there?
You know, I don't think it does. It could possibly, for various classes. There's some eighth graders that take courses over at the high school, but all those children are escorted over there. Now, band practice is a good example, that I've been out there in the evenings, for whatever reason, and all of a sudden, a xylophone's being pushed across the highway. You know? And I'm wondering, who authorized this? But, you know, we work on those issues every day.
From my understanding, again, my kids went to both, so very involved. I think they share, I know eighth graders participate in the marching band at the high school, so in the afternoons, they do go over. I think they share in band equipment, so maybe we should find some new equipment. So that's why you see the big instruments going across the highway. And I literally seen them running across the highway because cars are coming, because, like I said, I live right there, so I see it all the time. But they do cross during the day, and I've seen them, like, with the principal going, Mr. Lucy going, or Dr. Lucy going back and forth with students or a teacher. But, yeah, it's, it happens, you know, throughout the day, especially in the afternoons.
I agree with Chairman Lackey in that gates should be considered.
I was being facetious, but it might work.
And I mean, we're gonna have to talk to the highway department and our engineers and all, and see what we can get worked out.
Let's solve it.
Do our best to. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Questions? Sammy?
What we just heard is, students cross, they cross all the time. And if you're crossing in a crosswalk, it's a, you, as a driver, have to yield to the person crossing. Whether that happens or not, that's not my problem, but at the end of the day, if there's a crosswalk there, and we have students crossing back and forth, I think, whether it's the school system or the county highway system, somebody's got to put a crossing in there. And, and it needs to be in now, and sooner rather than later, when this, if that's taking place, because we just heard that students do cross.
I agree.
And you can put up a hawk signal that goes in mid-block, and it starts flashing and tells everybody to stop. And, yeah, those cost money, but that's not, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, I'll leave it at that, but it sounds like to me it's a problem that needs to be solved. And honestly, it's a pretty simple problem to solve with a proper crosswalk, so.
Construction going on, because it's going on in front of my house, I don't know why they just don't put in, if they're putting in one sidewalk over in front of the middle school for a drop-off, why can't they put sidewalks on the, on the Page High side? So when they cross over, they are not just going off half of a shoulder, because there's nothing over there, some gravel.
There's no sidewalk?
No. Barely a shoulder.
If it's, if there's connections in my, we gotta do better. I'm not responsible, we're not responsible, but somebody's gotta do better. We gotta, we gotta make that connection. If those are, if those students are crossing back and forth.
And the big xylophones, they, they have to be on the road a little bit, because there's no sidewalks and there's really no shoulders. So, I've seen them walking up through there, but it's a problem that's been going on for years.
Yep.
Thanks. Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to follow up with one suggestion. To be proactive, I'm prepared to support, obviously, what's been presented today. I didn't mean, you know, we have this sidewalk here that's gonna start at this location. It could, in the future, continue on down there. I've had two constituents drive me out there, so I've walked the property where this goes over to the fields. And maybe we could just sit down with all the parties and put our heads together, and maybe even with some community sports, some PTO support, raising money, whatever, we can put our heads together. I don't want this, this party to feel like they've done a great job on this plan, which is terrific, but we want to work toward that connectivity, as I hear the consensus of the commission. Thank you.
I have one, one other question. Why are the sidewalks not a part of this project?
The question was, why are the sidewalks not a part?
Are sidewalks not a part of this project?
Primarily because our drawings have come out and designed, and the project has, without knowing what the final highway department design was gonna be.
Surely they can tell you where the limits are to put a sidewalk.
I would like to hope that they could.
Would you like me to come out and tell you where to put a sidewalk?
Do what, sir?
I'd be glad to come out and tell you where to put a sidewalk.
Oh, I can tell them where to put sidewalks, but I've got to figure out, we just got the final drawings on the roadway just 30 days ago. And we're trying to coordinate between where, I agree 100% that something has to be done. And I can make it part of this project.
I think you should.
I, you can put it on a, an amendment to the, to the, to the items.
I think that's something we need to consider, folks. I mean, a sidewalk's not, I mean, not a million-dollar project.
No, you're, it's 100 and a half, maybe, 175.
The roadway project plat, so I know how the roads are gonna go, because it affects, you know, my property. So, I mean, it's out there. So I don't see why we couldn't go back and say, okay, we need to definitely put in some sidewalks, Page Middle, Page High, so those kids, when they do cross, at least, you know, have a, even wide enough to push those xylophones across, because they do share the equipment. I do know that.
Well, it's a start on a partial solution, once we figure out how to cross, but they gotta be there. So, let's include that as a motion of approval. You bet.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we, and I want to ask Kevin this, because I want to do what he's comfortable with. Kind of starting with the original question, we have the sidewalk, to their credit, as a great addition to the site, with what they're doing with the expansion, which is terrific. If you look on the plan, again, on C2.2, you've got the sidewalk, integral curb walk. It looks like it's 10 feet multimodal. It's going along, it's hugging that area, it's connecting over to another section. So I'm just curious, where it does end, where he, he, he explained to us that that's where the drop-off is. We don't want to design in this body, that's up to them, they're the professionals, but I'm just wondering if it can come all the way down, for that would be an appropriate amendment for what we're looking at tonight. I'm not sure. Do you see that, Kevin? Is that something that's worth us authorizing to contend all the way down to the Arnold Road?
I'm sure this engineer can figure out where to put the sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the sidewalk they've already put on is already there for part of it, which is exemplary. Anyway, it's just a suggestion.
Where they cross from Page Middle, they usually cross at the new, not the, where the new stuff's going, but the old, like, bus lane, where the buses go in.
Okay.
I've seen, that's where they normally cross, because it's, they walk out the parking lot where the bus lane is. It's the shortest distance, thank you. They cross over the road, and you're almost kind of in front of the baseball field there. I'm sorry, the softball field.
Yeah, yeah.
And they have to kind of walk up the road. So it's almost like sidewalk needs to go there, they have a crossing walk, pick up on the other side, and have the sidewalk up to, you know, the high school, going past the softball field sign, and seems reasonable.
It should be. Yeah, I would think, and connect, and whether it's the highway department or the school, it's pretty easy, and, and may require a little bit of curb and gutter, which protects the, the curb line protects the pedestrian as well, and, and whether we make it a part of this motion, which I agree with, I mean, it's, it should be fairly easy. I mean, it's, because it's not all theirs, because it, there is a 1,500 foot off of the, off of this site or along Arnold Road that need to be addressed, but, but this needs to be addressed, pretty, should, you know, and I mean, just, let's figure this out, and...
Yeah, I agree that it can be addressed and resolved. You know, we have to work around a lot of right-of-way with the gas company and highway department and everything else, but it can be done, and we'll get it done.
Good.
And if you want to make it a part of this approval, that's fine with me.
Any other discussion? Arnold Road, lady, you want to make a motion?
Don wants to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've got a question on this, just sitting and listening to all the conversations.
I've got a question on this, just sitting and listening to all the conversation. We've got a safety issue with the children crossing and stuff like that, and I think it's important enough to, to hold back on this, on approval of this thing till next month to let them bring something back to us that's, that was acceptable for a safety factor. I don't know if the, our attorney is, could we do that?
Can you defer it?
Yeah.
I mean, you can, or you can just add that as a condition of approval, that sidewalks have to be installed and.
But we won't know where or what's being installed.
Well, but you can have the, you can have it, the condition where the engineering department has to approve the location or highway department so that they're comfortable with it, but that way the condition goes on there and it's part of the approval process.
But I'd also want the, the school involved in it to make sure it's where it needs to be, not just the engineering department, but the school.
Well, but the school system would be the one that would direct it if it's part of this approval. And so it, they would put it where they want it, and then engineering or highway would be okay with it or not.
I think if you had a motion that said the engineers for the school provided sidewalks so you had continuous connectivity between Page Middle and Page High, that's all we need to say. I don't need, we don't need to get into the engineering of.
How about the, the crossing, children crossing that road?
I think a temporary thing is you put the lines across there that says this is a pedestrian crossing until you get a solution. I'll paint the lines if you got a problem with that.
I don't have a problem.
All right. Now, I got a grand, I got two grandchildren.
I understand, sir.
If we could put, if we could put both of those in it as far as the crossing, the road along with the sidewalk, I'd be agreeable to make that a motion.
Make that motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation with the condition that the sidewalks be extended where they are needed and the crossroad, the crossway be marked exactly at the end of the sidewalk so the school system can bring the children across safely.
I agree with that.
Good. Any further discussion with a motion or second? All of, prepare to vote. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Gen item 15, non-residential site plan review for Crowell Property Non-Traditional Wastewater Treatment and Disposal System on 359.57 acres located off of Lampkins Bridge Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting site plan approval for a proposed non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system in the Rural Development One zoning district. The proposed system will serve a residential subdivision that is planned for the property. County zoning ordinance requires a site plan for a proposed non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system to be approved before a concept plan for the subdivision the system will serve may be approved. Subject property totals approximately 360 acres and is located on Lampkins Bridge Road. Property is relatively flat and contains a stream and its associated flood plain. This stream transects the property approximately 1,400 feet west of Lampkins Bridge Road. Property is bordered to the west by the Harpeth River and its associated flood plain. The flood plains for both the stream and the Harpeth River encompass approximately 143 acres of the site. All ordinance standards with regards to natural resource protections have been met. The treatment system, which will utilize recirculating sand filter technology to treat wastewater, will be located in the southern portion of the site approximately 300 feet from the adjoining property. The disposal system will be located nearby. These individual system components meet the specific setback requirements of the zoning ordinance. In total, these wastewater components will compromise approximately 27 acres of the subject property. A certificate of convenience and necessity has been issued by the Tennessee Public Utilities Commission, and a draft state operating permit has been issued by TDEC. A design development report and a detailed soils investigation report were prepared by the applicant and submitted to the county. County's wastewater consultant has reviewed these reports and is recommending approval of the proposed site plan. A conceptual layout for the proposed subdivision on the property, which depicts 252 lots, has been included as Sheet C 3.0 of the site plan packet. This conceptual layout is provided for illustrative purposes only and has not been reviewed for compliance with applicable regulations. It is staff's, staff's opinion that the combination of distance, topography, and existing vegetation will serve to adequately screen the treatment system from adjacent properties. The landscaping plan has been submitted and approved. Site plan is in order and staff recommends approval with the condition that prior to submission for the first section of the proposed subdivision, a zoning certificate must be obtained for the completed treatment and disposal system. Prior to issuance of the zoning certificate, the applicant shall provide the following. Number one, letter from TDEC indicating that the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system was installed and is functioning. Number two, as-built drawing showing the location of all system components and a sealed certification letter from the design engineer indicating that the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system was constructed in accordance with the approved construction plans and specifications. Number three, a letter from the owner slash utility provider indicating that it has accepted the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system and is currently operating same. Number four, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $320,500 for the non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system as specified by the county's wastewater consultant. And number five, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $21,100 for landscaping improvements.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Commence? Don?
I have a question if I could, Mr. Chairman. For the next phase of this, the concept plan, something to, for staff, the going from Lampkins Bridge Road up to Highway 96 is a pretty dangerous place, and I would ask that we look at that before, on that, the concept plan, because it's a safety hazard. And when you look at that, if you take that in consideration, I would appreciate it.
We'll look at that, Mr. Crowhan.
And I'll make a move to accept this staff recommendation on this.
You bet.
To kind of piggyback off of Don, also on Lad Road where, I guess, like the main entrance appears going to be, literally when you turn out of this proposed subdivision, you're in a really sharp curve. And again, those are like old country roads out there with a lot of houses and cars on it. So I'd almost like to look at that as, as well, just where the main, looks like the main entrance is going to be on Lad Road.
That will be reviewed as well. Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Motion?
No, I'm not making a motion.
That was the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
He made the motion.
I understand. I was waiting on the second. You seconded? You're too soft. You gotta, you gotta yell out like Sanders here. All right, we have motion and second. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Gen item 16, non-residential site plan review for King's Chapel Community. This is a revision non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system on 19.81 acres located off of Meadowbrook Drive in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting revised site plan approval for an existing non-traditional wastewater treatment and disposal system in the Rural Development One zoning district. The applicant has requested action on this item be deferred until the August 2019 meeting to allow additional time to address staff's comments. Staff concurs with this request.
Motion to defer. Voice made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Final plats, final plat review for Daventry Section 1 reapproval containing 14 lots on 52.09 acres located off Tullis Road in the 5th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A revised final plat for this section of the development was approved at the August 9th 2018 meeting and reapproved at the February 2019 meeting. All of the required bonds have yet to be posted, and as such, the reapproval of the final plat has expired. The applicant is requesting reapproval of the final plat. Staff recommends reapproval with the following conditions. Number one, the approved HOA documents shall be concurrently recorded with the recording of the final plat. Number two, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $200,000 for roads, drainage, and erosion control. This is a reduced amount based on construction work completed. Number three, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $488,000 for water improvements as specified by Millcroft and Utility District. Number four, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $48,000 for the wastewater collection system. Number five, posting of a performance bond in the amount of $81,510 for landscaping improvements. Number six, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and the submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number seven, applicant provide two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinance System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Motion made and seconded. Prepare to vote. Record it. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Gen item 18, final plat review for George Clark Hurd III and Kathy Ann Hurd, property large lot easement, excuse me, subdivision, second and third lots off of an easement containing two lots on 28.7 acres located off Arno College Grove Road in the 2nd Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is approximately 29 acres in size and is located off Arno College Grove Road approximately 1/4 of a mile east of Arno Alisona Road. The applicant is requesting approval of a large lot easement subdivision in order to create two lots, being the second and third lots off an existing 50-foot ingress egress utilities easement. At this time, the applicant is requesting deferral to the August 2019 meeting to allow more time to address setback issues. Staff concurs with this request.
Motion to defer. Voice made and seconded. Prepare to vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Gen item final 19, final plat review for Poplar Ridge Large Lot Easement Subdivision containing four lots on 25.34 acres located off Barnhill Road in the 1st Voting District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is approximately 25 acres in size and is located off Barnhill Road approximately 1/5 mile south of Bradford Road. The applicant is requesting approval of a large lot easement subdivision in order to create five lots off of 50-foot ingress egress utilities easement. The site contains natural resources requiring a protection, including steep slopes and woodlands. Nearly all of the site is covered in tree canopy. All zoning ordinance requirements, including those regarding the protection of natural resources, have been met. The applicant is proposing individual septic systems for the lots, and the Williamson County Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved the request. Water will be provided by on-site wells. As no fire hydrants are proposed and as none are located within 500 feet of the building envelopes, the building envelopes have been separated by 200 feet. The plat is in order, and staff recommends approval subject to the following. A notice of coverage issued by TDEC will be required prior to the signing of the plat. Number two, a land disturbance permit must be obtained for the overall development. And number three, driveway and drainage infrastructure must be complete consistent with zoning ordinance requirements prior to issuance of building permits.
Questions of staff? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item final is a non-agenda item. Final plat review for the Cliffs at Garrison Creek LLC Large Lot Easement Subdivision reapproval containing five lots on 45.99 acres located off Garrison Road in the 8th Voting District. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A final plat for this development was approved at the May 2019 meeting. The applicant, applicant failed to record the plat within 30 days from this body's approval, and the final plat has expired. The applicant is requesting reapproval of the final plat. Staff recommends reapproval subject to the following. The implementation of the revegetation plan approved on May 3rd, 2019 shall be required prior to release of building permits within the common plan of development. Number two, a notice of coverage issued by TDEC will be required prior to the signing of the plat. Number three, a land disturbance permit must be obtained for the overall development. And number four, driveway and drainage infrastructure must be complete consistent with zoning ordinance requirements prior to issuance of building permits.
Thank you, sir. Questions, staff? Beth?
I mean, this is in the 9th Voting District, is that correct? Okay, thanks.
And what, does that have to do with anything?
Mr. Chairman, and I was protecting your pride.
I had to say that.
I was trying to cover for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
And three seconds. Prepare to vote. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. We are out of here. Thank you for your patience.